Tonight, I just want to say up top, oh, I will wait a minute. I'm being told. Okay, we're good. I just wanted to say up top, we are hoping that our Spanish language interpreter will be here shortly. So very sorry for the inconvenience. But we will just get started. If you are joining us at City Hall, please make sure you get some snacks and warm drinks at the back. My name is Sarah Pearlman. I'm the Assistant Planner with the city. And I'll be sharing a short presentation with you so you have a sense of how the city and state defines housing cost burden and rent burden, how we track housing-related trends along with some high-level data, and identified barriers and actions that the city is working on. We do have a poster activity for input at the back of the room along with a poll for those online. And we'll end the presentation with time for discussion. The goal of this meeting is really to provide a forum to discuss the issue and to hear from you about your experiences. So before we get started also, just some basic housekeeping and context. You can find restrooms just outside this room. When you walk out the main doors, you'll go down the hall and to the left, the restrooms are on the right. Please feel free to get up and get snacks or drinks during the presentation. If you're on Zoom, please feel free to put questions in the chat and we'll track them for the discussion portion at the end. The Planning Commission, in their role as Committee for Citizen Involvement, is in attendance tonight in the audience to listen and provide additional input. The Planning Commission is responsible for making recommendations to City Council on land use and planning matters, notably policies related to planning for the housing needs of all our community members at all stages of their lives. In their role as Committee for Citizen Involvement, the Planning Commission conducts work sessions and other public meetings that are intended to encourage a more conversational exchange of ideas, such as this evening's meeting. We'll go to the next slide. And so before I get into the information portion of the night, I want to share some discussion questions that we'll return to at the end. You may have seen these questions when you came in, for those of you in person, on the poster activity. For those of you on Zoom, if we have anyone on Zoom, we will send out a poll with multiple choice questions that mirrors the in-person posters. We ask, or we're asking these questions to get a deeper understanding of some of the challenges that you face related to housing and to get a sense of what kind of actions the city can prioritize to help you reach your housing goals. So we'll send out the poll on Zoom now and we're just gonna wait a few minutes in case to give people time online to respond. If you haven't checked out the posters at the back of the room already, I think most of you have. You're welcome to do that now and maybe we'll just wait a couple minutes for the poll. Okay, thank you for your patience. Jumping right in, they, on the next slide. The formal definition of housing cost burden is when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing costs. Both renters and owners can be cost burdened and severely cost burdened. For some statistics, in 2023, 23% of homeowners and 55% of renters in Wilsonville experience cost burden. And on the next slide, we will dive a little bit deeper. Severe rent burden is a subcategory of cost burden. A household experiences severe rent burden when more than 50% of their income is spent on rent and utilities, housing costs. Based on state and federal data that the city tracks each year, in 2023, 29% of Wilsonville renters were severely rent burdened. Onto the next slide. I will not spend too much time on the data tonight, but just wanted to provide a high-level overview. So the majority of renters in Wilsonville live in apartment-style homes, as you can see in this bar chart. Renters typically experience more cost burden than owners, as we kind of reviewed a couple slides back. And as you may expect, lower-income renters experience the highest rates of cost burden. One more slide on the data. Yeah, over the last decade, housing costs, both sales price, so for homeowners, and rental prices for renters, have increased at a higher rate than income. You can see these rates on the slide, with household income increasing by 29%, rental costs by 58%, and housing sales price by 72%. On the next slide, we'll talk about some barriers that the city is aware of. Those include lack of variety in types of houses, locations, styles, housing discrimination, entry costs like deposits and moving costs, the cost of utilities, increasing rents, and an issue of rents determined by algorithms, changes in technology, HOA prohibitions on renting, and credit issues and other administrative barriers. The increasing use of housing as short-term rentals has also been discussed as a general barrier. The city does have limitations on the entire, the use of entire properties as short-term rentals. And so it is maybe not as big a barrier in Wilsonville, but is something that we're aware of and tracking. The city is working to address some of these barriers, but some barriers are outside of the city's control. Onto the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about how exactly the city tracks housing data, issues, questions. One key tool is the annual housing report. City staff put together a housing report each year that tracks how many homes were built. It also analyzes cost trends, including sales and rent prices. The report includes comparisons to neighboring cities and usually has kind of an explanatory topic to wrap it all together that changes each year. You can see last year's report and reports going back to 2014, so the city's been doing it for about a decade now, on the city's website. Because the population of severely rent-burdened households has been increasing in Wilsonville in recent years, the city has begun tracking severe rent burden in the report as well. So your feedback from tonight will be compiled and reflected in future housing reports. So we're very grateful to have that feedback. The housing report is one source that informs the work of the Planning Commission, who makes recommendations to City Council, as we discussed earlier, on policies related to planning for the housing needs of all community members, all stages of life. And so your feedback tonight and just in general on long-range projects is tracked and contributes to housing-related policies that the city will enact. Our next slide will focus on a number of actions the city has been taking and is currently considering to address housing needs broadly based on housing-related plans and state rule changes. On the screen are a selection of actions directly relating to rental housing. So there are more housing actions. We just tried to pull out those specific to rental. A number of actions are in progress, so just wanted to note the Transit-Oriented Development Vuela on Barber Street. Some key actions currently under consideration for the city include implementing a rental housing inspection program, supporting the preservation of affordable rental housing, and sort of tangentially related, supporting homebuyer assistance programs and exploring ways to develop affordable housing through like acquiring and selling land. So we're happy to talk about other strategies that folks are aware of in the discussion portion, which is coming up shortly. As we're wrapping up, on the next slide, we just wanted to recognize the service providers who are in attendance tonight from Wilsonville Community Sharing, Heart of the City, and the Oregon Department of Human Services, as well as Clackamas County Aging and People with Disabilities Office. Wilsonville Community Sharing operates the Wilsonville Food Bank and connects those in need with a variety of resources. Heart of the City is a mission of Grace Chapel and organizes collection of resources, offers counseling and mental health services, and connects with other service providers. And then Oregon Department of Human Services, Clackamas County Aging and People with Disabilities Office provides a range of services for people living with disabilities and people who need support as they age. We highly encourage you to visit all of our wonderful service providers at the back of the room for those in person and for those on Zoom. We're happy to kind of discuss more if you have questions during the discussion portion. So on the next slide, just to kind of wrap it all together, wanted to first say thank you so much for your time and attention. We really appreciate you all coming out tonight. We wanted to end the presentation by hearing from you. So our discussion questions at the beginning about the amount you pay for housing and how that impacts your life broadly and about your ultimate housing goals are really to help the city get a deeper understanding of some of the challenges you face related to housing and to get a sense of what kind of actions the city can prioritize to help you reach your goals. We know that the city doesn't always have the power and ability to address all issues and barriers, but your feedback can help us prioritize our resources in the most helpful and effective way. So with all of that said, my colleague Kim Ribold will share a brief real-time overview of your responses to the discussion questions from the poster and any responses we got from the poll. And if you're comfortable elaborating or sharing, we welcome you to join the conversation. We have like a floating microphone that we can pass around that my colleague Dan Pauly has, or in the chat on Zoom. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Can, this is working. Okay, great. I'm gonna actually go up here that way. I'm not, this is awkward to not be looking at people. Trying to crunch some numbers in real time here. So we had two posters in the back of the room in the Zoom poll. And the first poster was asking more broadly about people's housing goals. One of the things that's important for us to understand as a city when we start thinking about the types of actions Wilsonville can take to assist those in the community with housing is understanding people's housing goals. And so a lot of times, you might have the place you live, but it might not be what you ultimately dream of. Maybe you're renting and you want to own a home. Maybe you live in a home, but it's not big enough. Or you find that the maintenance is too much and you actually want to move to somewhere smaller. So we wanted to just get a quick sense of what people's housing goals were. So of the different prompts and options, we found that just over six or so of the respondents wanted to have their ultimate goal be to buy a home. We hear this a lot, that homeownership is difficult to get into, particularly if you are currently renting and having to put most of your income towards that. I think a lot of the rent burden information that Sarah shared tonight shows that when you're putting up to a third to half of your income towards housing costs, it becomes difficult to save for anything, let alone save for a down payment for a home. But we see that a good chunk of people do want to buy a home. Alternatively, we had five people respond that they actually didn't have a desire to move right now, so are happy and stable in their housing situation. We did have a few respondents indicate that they would be seeking to move to a more affordable home. So it's that you might have a stable place to live, but that the cost of housing and living there is preventing you from doing other things in your life. And so understanding those needs in the community is important for us to see as a city what kind of actions can be most impactful for helping people to achieve their housing goals, both now and in the future. We did also get some comments about challenges when you are renting, particularly upfront costs, about signing, when you go to sign a lease. And so that is again a challenge, particularly if you end up needing to move out of your current housing situation and have to break a lease. That can be very costly and keep you from ultimately meeting your housing goals. The second question we asked was a little more about how the amount you are paying for your housing impacts other aspects of your life. We did get a wider variety of responses here. The most dominant response, which I think based on the information Sarah shared, is not surprising, is that it is more difficult to save for larger costs in your life. So whether that be the cost of buying a home or the cost of going on vacation or buying something for yourself, like a vehicle or other needs that you have, it just becomes that much more challenging. Five respondents indicated that they have less money to be able to either use towards utility bills or for those utilities to be comfortably used. So particularly when you think of comfortably used, a lot of people will often sacrifice heat or air conditioning. There are a number of safety impacts that come along with that that aren't great. And I do want to point out that there are, one of the resources that is available to the community are utility assistance. And a lot of the service providers we have here tonight can provide you with some more information about resources that are available because there are some out there. And even though that might not be much, that might help make it so that your housing situation is a little more affordable. Three responses indicated that housing doesn't meet their space needs for what they have. That we often see this sometimes with families in particular and not having the correct number of bedrooms to accommodate either children and/or older family members that might be living with them. Other responses were about less money for medical care or medication, having to move suddenly or on a continual basis just to keep your housing affordable, not being able to start a family, or having to take on additional jobs or hours. And so you're not taking care of yourself when you have to spend that much time working. So with that, I think we want to take this time to, A, see if there's any additional questions the audience had. I know that the presentation was short, but there was a lot of data in there about housing costs. You might have some questions about what it is the city has been doing or could do, and so we're open to those. We also, if anybody in the audience wants to elaborate more on the responses they provided, we'd be happy to hear that as well. As Sarah noted, the Planning Commission is here and attending and listening. But also, you know, as Sarah noted, we do annual housing reports. We're also in the process of developing a housing strategy for the city. And so the impact, the input you're able to give us helps inform what choices the city makes as we put together these plans. So with that, Mr. Pauly over here will have the floating microphone. I'd encourage you, raise your hand if you'd like to have a question. And then as well, if you are on Zoom, you can honor your question into the chat and we will incorporate it into the conversation. I'm sure somebody has a question. Or an observation. You know, I think one of the things that, one of the things we've heard a lot as we do our housing planning work is that sometimes there's an over-reliance on just data and reports. And those data and the reports are really important. But I think what we often struggle to get and hope to get are actual stories. We find that stories are powerful. First-person experiences with housing are powerful and really, I think, provide more important qualitative feedback to our decision-makers. And so I would just, if you have any observations, stories you'd like to share, I think we'd like to hear. I do see a hand raised. Thank you.
Is this about the right volume?
Yep.
Okay. I have been in public housing in the Portland area. And I'm currently on housing support here in Wilsonville. And a couple of different experiences that I've had that I feel like the planning people would benefit from knowing about is in public housing buildings where you're, I think it is important to accommodate different income levels. But when you concentrate income levels and you don't have variety. For me personally, I lived for eight years in a one-bedroom apartment with two children in low-income housing in the Portland area. And there was, you need very strong management. Otherwise, some of the people in that situation will be severely stressed and compromised by some of the other people. And I'm not trying to say everyone causes trouble, but it's the ones who do, it has a very large impact. And so I know it's kind of what we can do right now to kind of put everybody in a tidy, you know, building. But I'd love to see the housing options be more interspersed among income levels. And the other thing I want to say is that because less people can afford a home, there are more people who have different lifestyle habits living in apartment complexes. I'm just gonna use smoking as an example that I personally run into in both my position in the Portland housing market and here. And, you know, when someone who, say, wants to be a smoker can't afford a home, then they're forced to live in an apartment complex where you're not allowed to smoke. And then people have to smoke outside. And not everyone has the capacity or the comfort level to do that. And then, like, I work from home and I homeschool my kids, and so we're there a lot. And when you have a neighbor who's smoking a significant period of the time, that's compromising your air quality and your health. And it's not allowed, but it happens all the time. And so that's one thing I really say about, you know, making housing affordable so people can have the choice to live the way they want to live and not compromise their neighbors is really important.
Thank you.
Hi, I just want to share something that it happened to my family. So this year, so we were paying like $2,500 every month. So we were struggling every month to pay our rent until finally we have to decide just to, you know, to break the lease. So we were charged, you know, they charged one month of your rent and half of that, you know, of that rent for breaking your lease early. So with the maintenance and, you know, the fine for breaking the lease early, so I ended up paying like around $6,000. They gave me a month to pay, you know, the total amount, which I, we were not, you know, we couldn't pay that whole amount. So they said they will send us in that, you know, to an office debt collector, which they did. And when I called them, they said if I wanted to make any payment arrangements so it will, you know, like hurt or damage my credit history and, yeah, my credit and my rental history. So which I didn't want to happen because when we have to break the lease, my children and I have to split because I didn't have any place to go with all of my children. So we tried to look for something cheaper. But, you know, like those places like Autumn Park, they are always a waiting list. So then I, I have to pay the amount. I went to the bank because they gave me some options to look for, you know, a loan. So I didn't qualify for that. My son had to help. So and now I, I will need to start paying the loan in January. So that will be $300 or $350 for paying that loan that my son have to ask for in order to help to pay my, you know, my debt. So I don't get it in something that is like, you know, not fair for me, I will say, why the landlord is, you know, like allow to ask for or to charge people, to charge the renters with a lot of money for breaking your lease early because we are doing it because we are not, you know, we can't afford it anymore. And at the end, we ended up like, like me, paying more than $6,000. So now I have the loan in Wells Fargo. So it's something, in that moment, I was, I was crying because that was pretty hard for me. And then that days, you know, after, because until today, you know, I'm not with my children. So they are now living with me. And now that's why I prefer to ask for a loan because I didn't want my credit and my rental history, you know, to get a hot damage. Because I want to look for an affordable place or, you know, to rent and to come together again with my children. Because I have a four-year-old little one and it is pretty hard for me, you know. And it's something that I, in that moment, I didn't know where to ask for help. So we tried to do our best to get all the, you know, all that thing done the best we could because I, I don't want to get my history and my credit, you know, in a bad situation. So that is also something that I just wanted to share. That's my own experience and maybe a lot of people is going through something, something similar. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And I would, I didn't mention, but I know several of you have spoken with our service providers. I do want to also, as we hear some of your stories, just provide an invitation. If anybody wants to speak more about opportunities or services that you might have, just for people who might be watching online who are not here as well, please feel free to raise a hand and let me know. Or if anybody has questions for the service providers if you are not here. I've got a hand. Come on, you could just, yeah, Dan will give you the microphone.
I'm Sandy. I'm with Wilsonville, I'm not with Wilsonville Community Sharing, I'm with the Heart of the City. And I was just listening to your story. The only concern, like this is something that becomes an issue because even when we partner together with, if we reach, if she reaches out to us and asks for assistance, we can only help with a percentage of that. And that's one of the biggest problems is that not only we can help with a percentage of that, we start partnering with Wilsonville Community Sharing. We're all kind of coming together trying to help. But when you're talking $6,000 and you're talking anything pretty much over $1,500, we're all tapped out and then we're having to refer them to county resources and other things. And it becomes a big, important thing for just understanding how that process works for individuals because we're seeing an increase in the need for rental assistance. It's become a really big issue. I think our numbers have been up 30-something percent, 56%? Just trying to be conservative. On the number of people like asking for rental assistance help. And that's been a burden because we have depleted our funds pretty fast this past year. I know that St. Vincent de Paul has helped around a lot and their funds have depleted a lot. And so this is a really huge issue that we want to make sure that is being heard because we are concerned for our residents and making sure that they can get help and what programs can be there. So we can try to navigate and help you navigate and get resources. But also there are still limitations even what our agencies can do with this problem.
Any other questions or comments? I would, maybe I'll put you all on the spot a bit. Our Planning Commission has been working over the past year along with some other, other, our city council and a task force on looking at some housing strategies. We've shared a lot of information with them. Part of, I think, one of the goals of this meeting is to not only, you know, start talking about what some of the issues are with rent burden and the impacts they have on people, but ideas for how the city, you know, again acknowledging that we can't solve the problem, but things that we might do or consider doing in the future that could help. So I will maybe see if we have any brave experts in our audience that might want to offer. Any thoughts based on the conversations we've been having or ideas about strategies that even if we're not doing them now, things we could consider in the future? I'll throw it out there. Awkward silence. All right. Commissioner Heberline.
Hi, I'm Ron Heberline. I'm one of the Planning Commissioners here at the, with City Wilsonville. I just wanted to say thank you, everybody who's participated today. And thank you very much to the two individuals who shared their stories. This type of information is stuff that you don't get in the data and get in the regular presentations. And it, it has an impact. And it, it has an impact. You know, everybody's gone through things in their life and, and being able to hear the struggles and, and those things really gives us an opportunity to make sure that we can look at these things from a more human perspective and, and see the areas where we may be able to have a positive benefit on your lives. So thank you for, for giving those, those examples and, and those stories. They're very important to us. You know, we, we spend a lot of time talking about the details in terms of, you know, how we make these things happen. City staff does a great job of giving us information. You know, right now, we're looking at a lot of different options in terms of what things we can recommend to, to the city council of, of things that we may be able to help with from a city perspective. And what I would really ask of, of all of you is to stay involved. You know, this, this type of feedback is more feedback than we get in almost all of our Planning Commission meetings combined throughout the year. So this is very important feedback that we can get from, from residents. And so I would say, please, if you have the time, continue to participate in feedback, whether that be sending an email or showing up on Zoom or being in person. It's, it's very important for us to be able to hear this feedback from the, from the community. So thank you, everybody, for being here and I hope that we can do good for all of you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Miranda Bejshon, the Planning Director for the city. And I just wanted to extend my gratitude as well for everyone's attendance and everyone's sharing. And since I didn't see any other hands raised, I figured I'd go ahead and ask a question. And that would be, obviously, cost is probably the number one or close to the number one choice in terms of where you can afford to live and where you're going to live. But there's obviously a lot of other components that go into deciding the location of where you live. And so I was actually hoping to extend a question to audience members to understand why you chose Wilsonville or why you chose kind of where you lived outside of cost. And if cost really was the only deciding factor, then what would you like to be able to choose based on? And so that could be, you know, schools, it could be the broader community environment, it could be the natural resources that are adjacent to your apartment or your house. And so I was just hoping that maybe folks in the room would be willing to elaborate on that kind of locational decision behind where you live outside of just cost, which I know is a huge driver for all of us. But if there were other elements, we would, I think, appreciate hearing those things because we obviously are trying to plan beautiful and great communities for all of our residents to live in. And so understanding those choices that you make is helpful to us. So if anybody's willing, please raise your hand.
Thank you. My name is Chris Heidemann, we live in the Villa Bla neighborhood. Our main reason for living where we are as family is that our, my mother and father-in-law, she's passed away, lived near, what's the name of the elementary school? Lowry, thank you, right near Lowry. So we moved over near the new skate park and my one brother-in-law lives a five-minute walk and the other one a ten-minute walk away. And my father-in-law now lives with that brother. So we see them all whenever we want. They stop by, we stop by. So it's family. Why would we live anywhere else? And we get to be in Oregon. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Bohard and I've lived in Wilsonville for, I would do it based on the age of my son, so I've been in Wilsonville for twenty-five years and lived down by Memorial Park. And, and actually, we did it for the schools, I think primarily. Our son was three when we started, so that was starting to become important. But the other was, quite honestly, the I-5 corridor because I actually worked down in Salem. So my husband worked in Oregon City, so it was a place that was convenient for both. So I think that's another thing that makes Wilsonville unique. But, and I didn't get a chance to say earlier, I think what's really important though as you guys think about this is people who don't struggle with housing costs, why it is important to have a diversity of housing and why affordable housing is important for the strength of our community. So I would say flip the conversation to, I'm very fortunate, that hasn't been an issue for me. But I think there's a lot of people who don't understand what it brings to the community to have that diversity. And so I see the education and the outreach and, and that part of the understanding, definitions, so people have misconceptions about what affordable housing means. So I think that becomes equally important to address those types of concerns because I think then as a community, we'll be more open and more in a positive response to what we get out of it as well. So just food for thought.
I have another comment, if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
Nobody else?
Yeah, I think that connects exactly with what you shared earlier, the, the fact that we need this mixture, that we learn from each other that way. I come from a background in software development and, or leadership of software development and you need to have different people. Some people are the rah-rah people, some people are the very detailed organizers, others are the, the get this done, get that done, the taskmasters, if you like. And you need all of those people. And the same is true in our communities, right? We learn from each other, we, we support each other. That's how you have a healthy, healthy and happy community. And by mixing all that up. Exactly like you said, right? That's why it's important. Thanks.
So I want to thank everybody for sharing. I, our family came to Wilsonville because to save a marriage and to start a family. My wife had a job in Portland and I had a job in Salem. But the key issue to start a family is to find a safe environment, walkable area to get, to go to schools, a livable place, a stable place so our child from birth to graduation to high school could stay in the same community, foster and develop relationships. Families that knew us, we knew them. That we could watch our children grow, leave in a stable way. I was impacted as a child where I was raised by a single mother who literally had to try to jump from one rental to another to try to stay in the same school district. There were times where she sent me to negotiate with the landlord. And in those days, when the electricity would get shut off, they put a padlock on. And I was, I was, took a little pliers to break open the fuse box, to turn on the electricity, tell my mom, hey, we got to pay the bill, and we would negotiate. So I was influenced by that. And I want my child, just like we all do, to try to be able to stay in our community. So anyway, that's my experience.
So the reason my family and I so like to live here in Wilsonville is because we consider it safe, that we can walk, you know, at night and feel safe. And my children, they have lived all their lives here. I've been here for more than twenty years, living in Wilsonville. It's the only city that I've lived more, you know, for years. And so then the schools. And it is a quiet city, so that's some of, a few things that, that reason. We know it is expensive, but actually, when I was looking for, you know, affordable renting in a different, like Oswego, Toa Latin, can be, it is almost the same for, you know, for housing. So, but we've been always trying to stay here in this city because we like it, we love it, and so we feel safe. And I like, you know, that it's a quiet city. So that's some of the main reasons in the schools that we've been always trying to stay living here. Thank you.
I would second that about the safety. That was the main reason for moving. We were in the gateway area before and experienced a pretty high level of crime in our neighborhood for several years. And the other thing is, is community events. Wilsonville is a nice size. Portland used to be able to go to community events and now they've become very overcrowded. And I feel like Wilsonville has a good balance for that still. And I ended up being able to find a place right across the street from the high school, which was helpful to give my son independence. He participated in the robotics program. And that program regularly does really, really well. And I'm, don't know how it ends up getting tied to the school, but somehow it's independent from the school and gets no funding through the school. And so that, that program is operating independently outside of the education system. But they go to the world tournament almost every year for the last twenty years.
All right, well, with that, we do have a couple more minutes. If anybody does have any further questions or comments. Otherwise, I'll say a couple of parting thoughts and provide some instructions for the rest of the evening. So as I mentioned, we are currently working on a housing strategy for the city. It's an update to some work we did back in 2020 with our Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And so that project is called Housing Our Future. It's been ongoing for the past year or so. But if you go to letstalkwilsonville.com, which is the city's website for kind of online engagement, you can learn some more information about the project there. If you happen to have questions, my contact information is up there and you can feel free to reach out directly to me. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take in any ideas or feedback you might have. Maybe you leave this meeting and something, you know, something you heard made you think of something that you want to share, please reach out and do so. So with that, we will be finalizing that work in the middle of 2025. There will be some more public input opportunities there. So we do look for you, if you're interested, to please participate in that project and provide us with feedback. I also want to personally thank you for coming tonight. I know housing is not always a topic that people really feel like leaving their house and coming to City Hall and sharing their stories about. So we're happy you did. We're happy that you are here and part of the Wilsonville community. And our goal as city staff who are working on housing projects, we know that we cannot solve issues that are much larger than what can be tackled at the local level. But what we want to do is look at the toolbox of solutions that are available to us, understand our community's needs and figure out how we can best adopt plans and policies that are really supporting what we hear from you. So with that, this is only the beginning of the conversation, I hope, for us. Please reach out with any other thoughts or questions. The Planning Commission does meet monthly. They do have opportunities for public input that are not tied to their agenda, as does the city council. And so there are opportunities there to share ideas and provide feedback. And we hope that you'll continue to do that. As we wrap this up, we will take some time to move out of this room. The Planning Commission does have a meeting and some other agenda items in here tonight. But our service providers will still be available outside. We're going to close these back doors here. But feel free to come out into the lobby, ask more questions of staff, ask more questions of the service providers and we'll try to get you the information you need. So with that, I'll give one last call for questions or comments in the room. All right, well, oh, we've got a hand up.
Hi, my name is Sam Skoll and I'm on the Planning Commission. And I'd like to reiterate what Ron said. It's most valuable to have community involvement. We see a ton of data all the time and it's basically regional data. We get a little bit of local data and then state data and you comb through that and kind of make your own assumptions. I would encourage everybody to continue to participate in the process, educate us so that we can make the best decisions for the community going forward or make better decisions and, and then work with you throughout the process. But, but having everybody here to talk about it and hear it and, you know, see it and all that stuff is most valuable to us because we don't get a lot of visitors. We, we do be once a month and it's, it's great to have a, a group of people here to talk to us. So thank you.
We got another hand up.
I'm Jennifer Muller, I'm also one of the Planning Commissioners and thanks for being here tonight. But my comment is actually to the, to the city staff. I had a thought based on a conversation I had this afternoon. I would love to see the city council push back on Metro in the supportive housing services tax, not to abolish the tax, but to keep the tax here in our community, the tax that Wilsonville residents are paying in. Why can't we keep that money and help our own citizens with that money? So something, I'd love to see that kind of initiative coming out of city council.
Thank you. Do you want to just come up here?
So I'd just like to offer a couple closing remarks and that is to reiterate what a lot of my, the staff and the commission have said. We, I've, I've worked in Wilsonville for a decade and it is made strong by the residents who live here. And I want to thank all of you for choosing this city and for coming here and speaking with us this evening and sharing what can be very personal information. It's also that each of us has our own community and our own network and our friends and our family, which is what makes this place strong. So I would, there's a lot of people who couldn't be with us tonight because they have a lot of other responsibilities or they're at work or something else. So I'd like to ask, I have these little flyers that I'm going to hand out to each of you and they're about hosting a conversation about housing in Wilsonville. And it's an opportunity for you to bring people together and have a conversation about housing in Wilsonville, much like we did tonight with each other. And then document that conversation and share it back with city staff. It's a way that each of us can kind of radiate the impact and our ability to have this conversation can go farther. And we as city staff and as policymakers have better information and have more connection with our community when we're having these policy conversations and when we're trying to address housing need in our city. So I just want to thank you again for being here and put an ask out that hopefully you'll help us to broaden this conversation either now or in the future. So thank you again for coming tonight. And please, please take some goodies as you leave. We don't need to eat all these cookies. So thank you very much and have a great evening.
All right, and so with that, I suspect the Planning Commission will want to take like the next five to 10 minutes as a recess and then shift over to the dais. Thank you. Thank you.
No way, really?
Oh.
See, they're amazing. I went forward to them every year. Amanda's gone. I'm faster than you. You should lose.
All right. Attention, children. I call the December 11th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Chair Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
The Carmel.
Here.
Matt Constantine.
Here.
Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova. Jennifer Willard. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that citizens have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing or public work session tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record, or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Please come to the podium when you're, when you are called forward or unmute yourself on Zoom when the clerk requests. Anyone would like to testify at this time?
I currently do not have any attendees on Zoom.
Very good. Next up then is consideration of minutes. So the, the November 13th Planning Commission meeting, wait a second. Were previously distributed, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Very good. That moves us on to the work session. Next on the agenda is the work session for the Wilsonville industrial land readiness. This work session is a chance for the Planning Commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. At this time, I call for city staff to present information that they have prepared for the work session. Will city staff please present?
Good evening, Chair Carr and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Luxhoy, Associate Planner, and we are here tonight to seek the Planning Commission's input on two draft work products for the first phase of the Wilsonville industrial land readiness project. And additional work sessions with Planning Commission and Council on code amendments are anticipated in January through April next year with adoption hearings in May to June. And joining me tonight for this presentation is Nicole Underwood and Dan Pauly. Nicole, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Nicole Underwood with Echo Northwest, and I presented with you all in October. So continuing on with that project.
So there are several tasks involved in the first phase of this project as listed on the slide. At the October 9th, 2024 work session, we presented key findings from the economic inventory and land use analysis prepared by ECO. And tonight, we are presenting two other work products. One is the buildable lands inventory and site suitability analysis memo, and then the development feasibility of contractor establishments memo. The information will help the city understand what development types are viable, given current market conditions, what conditions might be needed in the future to support desired development, and what types of policy interventions could help facilitate that development as the city works on making the Basalt Creek area development ready. And now Nicole is going to present the summary of the two analyses and the findings of the identified work products.
Awesome. Thanks, Cindy. So as Cindy shared, a part of our work for this project is to update the buildable lands inventory from the 2018 concept plan. That was based, I think, on a 2014 BLI. So this update serves two purposes, to provide a revised assessment of developable acres in Basalt Creek and to identify lands that have existing economic uses that may have redevelopment potential. So the land base for the BLI encompasses a total of 453 acres. An important part of evaluating economic opportunities in Basalt Creek is understanding what portion of that land is available for development. So one consideration is constraints in the study area that prohibit development. So based on Washington County's significant natural resource layer, 127 acres of the study area is constrained and considered undevelopable. Another consideration is the development status of the land. So in other words, whether the land is vacant, partially vacant with space for additional development, or developed. So the map here shows the development status with constraints applied, resulting in 175 acres in active use, which is considered developed. So when we bring this all together, Basalt Creek has about 150 acres that are considered vacant, unconstrained, buildable acres, and therefore, therefore available for development. This differs from the concept plan, which showed about 130 buildable acres. This difference is due to several factors, including an increase in land occupied by contractor establishments, which is now classified as developed, as well as a revised assessment of West Railroad's development capacity and constraints. And this map here highlights the current land uses in Basalt Creek, showing substantial portions occupied by contractor establishments. There's a plant nursery, mining operations, and residences. The light green areas represent undeveloped land. So unlike the general classifications of vacant and partially vacant land, this map offers detailed insights into the existing uses and provides valuable context for redevelopment and the feasibility analysis that we discuss in a little bit. So another part of our study was site suitability analysis. The draft economic inventory, which we talked to you all about in October, identified industries likely to be attracted to Basalt Creek due to things like strategic location in the South Metro, access to I-5, access to a strong employment base, and proximity to growing industrial hubs in Sherwood and Tuallaton. So these industries are listed here. The site suitability analysis builds on this by assessing the physical site-specific competitiveness of Basalt Creek for these industries. So ECO evaluated three different opportunity sites you see here. Southwest Green Hill to the northeast is largely vacant with minimal constraints. We also looked at the craft industrial area to better understand the most appropriate land uses there, given significant constraints. And then finally, we also evaluated West Railroad because a specific land use was not identified in the concept plan. And given all the changes that have occurred in the area, we thought it would be helpful to identify what types of businesses would locate there. So to assess the site competitiveness for target industries, ECO analyzed key characteristics such as those listed on this slide. The broad analysis provides a high-level understanding of site benefits, barriers, and potential industry suitability. It serves as a foundation for planning and zoning rather than definitive assessment of building size or configuration. And so the next three slides show our high-level evaluation. The southwest Green Hill site spans 57 acres with about 91% or 52 acres unconstrained. Its consolidated ownership, high proportion of undeveloped land, and proximity to infrastructure make it one of the more development-ready sites in Basalt Creek and highly attracted to a variety of users that you can see here. These uses align with the high-tech employment district originally identified in the concept plan. And then the craft industrial area is a little bit more challenging. It's split into eastern and western portions by site constraints and consists of seven tax lots with fragmented ownership. Most of them are under five acres. Only 14 acres are considered vacant, and its proximity to residential areas limits its suitability for high-intensity industrial uses. Instead, the area aligns with what was identified in the Basalt Creek concept plan of maker spaces or live-work spaces. However, with site aggregation, the southeastern portion of this site could accommodate small-scale industrial or office users on up to five acres, potentially mirroring the development of the Riverwood Business Center in Wilsonville that you see on this slide. The northeastern portion could also redevelop, however, it is likely less appealing due to its irregular shape.
So as Cindy shared, a part of our work for this project is to update the buildable lands inventory from the 2018 concept plan. That was based, I think, on a 2014 BLI. So this update serves two purposes, to provide a revised assessment of developable acres in Basalt Creek and to identify lands that have existing economic uses that may have redevelopment potential. So the land base for the BLI encompasses a total of 453 acres. An important part of evaluating economic opportunities in Basalt Creek is understanding what portion of that land is available for development. So one consideration is constraints in the study area that prohibit development. So based on Washington County's significant natural resource layer, 127 acres of the study area is constrained and considered undevelopable. Another consideration is the development status of the land. So in other words, whether the land is vacant, partially vacant with space for additional development, or developed. So the map here shows the development status with constraints applied, resulting in 175 acres in active use, which is considered developed. So when we bring this all together, Basalt Creek has about 150 acres that are considered vacant, unconstrained, buildable acres, and therefore available for development. This differs from the concept plan, which showed about 130 buildable acres. This difference is due to several factors, including an increase in land occupied by contractor establishments, which is now classified as developed, as well as a revised assessment of West Railroad's development capacity and constraints. And this map here highlights the current land uses in Basalt Creek, showing substantial portions occupied by contractor establishments. There's a plant nursery, mining operations, and residences. The light green areas represent undeveloped land. So unlike the general classifications of vacant and partially vacant land, this map offers detailed insights into the existing uses and provides valuable context for redevelopment and the feasibility analysis that we discuss in a little bit. Um, so another part of our study was site suitability analysis. The draft economic inventory, which we talked to you all about in October, identified industries likely to be attracted to Basalt Creek due to things like strategic location in the South Metro, access to I-5, access to a strong employment base, and proximity to growing industrial hubs in Sherwood and Tuallaton. So these industries are listed here. The site suitability analysis builds on this by assessing the physical site-specific competitiveness of Basalt Creek for these industries. So ECO evaluated three different opportunity sites you see here. Southwest Green Hill to the Northeast is largely vacant with minimal constraints. We also looked at the craft industrial area to better understand the most appropriate land uses there, given significant constraints. And then finally, we also evaluated West Railroad because a specific land use was not identified in the concept plan. And given all the changes that have occurred in the area, we thought it would be helpful to identify what types of businesses would locate there. So to assess the site competitiveness for target industries, ECO analyzed key characteristics such as those listed on this slide. The broad analysis provides a high-level understanding of site benefits, barriers, and potential industry suitability. It serves as a foundation for planning and zoning rather than definitive assessment of building size or configuration. And so the next three slides show our high-level evaluation. The Southwest Green Hill site spans 57 acres with about 91% or 52 acres unconstrained. Its consolidated ownership, high proportion of undeveloped land, and proximity to infrastructure make it one of the more development-ready sites in Basalt Creek and highly attracted to a variety of users that you can see here. These uses align with the high-tech employment district originally identified in the concept plan. And then the craft industrial area is a little bit more challenging. It's split into eastern and western portions by site constraints and consists of seven tax lots with fragmented ownership. Most of them are under five acres. Only 14 acres are considered vacant, and its proximity to residential areas limits its suitability for high-intensity industrial uses. Instead, the area aligns with what was identified in the Basalt Creek concept plan of maker spaces or live-work spaces. However, with site aggregation, the southeastern portion of this site could accommodate small-scale industrial or office users on up to five acres, potentially mirroring the development of the Riverwood Business Center in Wilsonville that you see on this slide. The northeastern portion could also redevelop, however, it is likely less appealing due to its irregular shape and nearby high-value residences. And then finally, West Railroad. This site covers about 165 acres with 90 acres unconstrained and considered developable. Its large parcels and potential access to regional transportation networks could position it well for uses such as general manufacturing, food processing, small warehousing, and distribution. Additionally, its proximity to Coffee Creek's industrial area could further enhance its appeal for providing support services for these industries. However, significant infrastructure upgrades are required and access is limited by the railroad undercrossing on Southwest Graham's Ferry Road. So ongoing infrastructure and alignment and capacity studies will provide further clarity on this site's suitability for targeted industries. So as seen in the BLI, contractor establishments are a significant presence in the area, particularly in West Railroad and along Southwest Day Road. These properties are characterized by small offices, storage buildings, and lay-down yards. They provide limited employment and lower property values compared with typical urbanized land. The site suitability analysis focused on the physical site characteristics and the ability of these opportunity sites to accommodate these industries, but not on, this is based on if owners want to redevelop. So to complement this, Echo Northwest also evaluated how contractor establishments impact that redevelopment efforts in Basalt Creek. So as you know, Basalt Creek is currently zoned with Washington County's FD20 zoning, which permits these low-intensity uses. These uses are not consistent with the vision in Basalt Creek of increased job density, especially high-wage jobs. Thus, the focus of this analysis is on understanding what conditions are needed to promote and incentivize urban industrial development as envisioned in that concept plan. So more simply put, what would encourage property owners to redevelop? So to address this question, we modeled a variety of different scenarios based on ownership, occupancy, site utilization, and costs. The analysis findings focus on redevelopment opportunities for both owners renting to contractor establishments and those using the land for their own business operations. So to evaluate the feasibility of these scenarios, we used a pro forma model, a standard tool in real estate analysis. This method replicates investor and lender decision-making by balancing development costs, expected revenue, and financing. So if development costs succeed, the project's value, including your profit margin, the project is deemed infeasible. So ultimately, this analysis resulted in three key findings. Existing contractor establishments generate substantial revenue for property owners with minimal management effort or risk, which reduces financial incentives for redevelopment. So many property owners are already achieving rents comparable to industrial and flex uses without the challenges associated with redevelopment. Market rents, the second finding being that market rents for urban industrial uses would likely need to increase by 60%, if not double, to incentivize redevelopment. So without that increase, a developer will not see the return on investment they need in order to justify the project and associated costs and risks. So that value difference occurs because a property's worth as a rental to the existing owner is higher than its worth to a developer, who is only willing to pay the value that's left after they account for their other hard and soft costs, as well as some revenue assumptions. So this is why urban industrial rents are essential for developers, to justify paying higher land prices. And I did want to note that this, the 60% listed on this is a revised estimate from what was presented in the memo, I think of 33%. So the third key finding is that owner-occupied properties are less likely to redevelop if the owner wants to maintain their business operations. So redevelopment is difficult for owner occupants, as they must consider relocation costs and potential increases in operational expenses. Limited regional industrial land supply could push these businesses further out, which could increase costs for labor, transportation, and operations as well. And so without substantial increases in land values or rents, redevelopment for these properties remains unlikely. So ultimately, these three findings suggest that contractor establishments are unlikely to redevelop in the near term. The gap between the property value expected by existing owners and what a developer is willing to pay is unlikely to close on its own, as in urban industrial rents increase. So it's likely that contractor establishment and raw yard rents would also increase. So if the city does want to encourage urban industrial development in areas currently occupied by contractor establishments, it may need to take a more hands-on approach to incentivizing or encouraging that redevelopment. So just to kind of bring this all together, in conclusion, limited infrastructure, fragments in ownership, constraints in pre-existing low-density uses pose barriers to implementing the concept plan. However, opportunities include development-ready sites and interested property owners, along with strong industrial demand, could create catalytic opportunities to spur additional development. The city's approach to addressing challenges and opportunities depends on its desired outcomes and risk tolerance. And with that, I'll hand it over to Cindy for discussion.
Thank you Nicole. That concludes our presentation for tonight, and we are seeking feedback from Planning Commission responding to the questions on this slide. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from Planning Commission? Commissioner Heberlein?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let me start on the first memo. Looking at, looking through the memo, I appreciate the work that you guys have done. A couple of questions around the clean tech aspects that you listed, multiple different clean tech business types. First question, battery storage was listed as a, I'll call it an energy production slash storage, but not manufacturing. Was there a rationale for that one being listed as just a storage facility and not the potential for the manufacturing aspects, like the other clean tech areas were?
It's a good question. The, these, those, I'm trying to think of the exact name. I was trying to pull up my memo. These were based off of the Clean Tech Competitive Assessment Report. And so basically, what this report did is it pulled out areas that it thinks Oregon is particularly competitive in, and identified the site suitability for those particular ones. I don't remember if manufacturing came up as one of the key areas in Oregon. It's something I could look into a little bit more. But I would assume that the manufacturing might align with some of the advanced manufacturing or some of the other site characteristics, but I'd be happy to look into that a little bit more.
Okay, great. And then solar and wind. It looked like it was being indicated as both production and manufacturing. Do we, do we think that standalone production is feasible in the Basalt Creek area?
So with, with wind specifically, when you think of manufacturing, that's huge pieces. Rail access is essential for that particular part. Solar also didn't seem very well-suited. So I believe I put that neither of those seem very well-suited for this particular area, and it has to do with that need for rail access, these large components that you're It's, these analyses are also not to say that some of these things might not locate here. It's just less competitive.
Sure.
And less likely.
Okay. All right. And then on the contractor establishments, can you talk a little bit about the the analysis that was done to determine that costs, rents would need to increase, you know, 60% to double to be able to encourage property owners to convert?
You want me to talk a little bit more about how we got there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually have a couple of hidden slides in anticipation of this question.
Gold star. I left mine at home.
Give me a second to see if we can get to those, because it's, it's basically, what we've done is an oversimplification of a complex analysis. There's a lot of different factors that went in here. So it's a little challenging to give you exact numbers. And so giving you that 60% was one way for us to kind of communicate this difficult analysis. And we're going to pull up a, if you want to go to the light, low site utilization.
I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna unhide all of these.
It's exciting. I've been waiting for this question.
Okay, let's see. Actually, I should have done it from the current slide.
That's okay.
We'll just flip through here.
Yeah, it's easier to talk through with a visual on this particular one.
Got to share screen again.
All right, and then
Okay, which one are we looking for?
And keep going down? Yeah, let's Next one. All right. So this, we're just going to look at the low-site coverage, because that's the easiest one to kind of comprehend in these graphs. We specifically really focused our key findings around the income-based approach, because that accounts for the revenue that the owners are already getting. And so we figured that's the more conservative approach to take and the more likely of how they're going to value their land. And so what you can see in this chart here is that the market rents that we see currently for urban flex and industrial uses are the gray box. They're about $9 to $14 per square foot. What you see from the column, the kind of teal-colored one, is a range of land costs and construction costs all put into one column. And so the very, very bottom being if it's low land costs and low construction costs, the rent that you would need is probably about 15, 15 per square foot of building. And so if you want to go to the next slide, how we got to that 60%, this one is the double, but it's the higher site utilization, is we basically took the average of the existing market rents and then looked at what the average, if you were to get kind of mid-range land costs and mid-range construction costs, what those averages would look like. And that's how we got to that number. It's not perfect, but it does give you that understanding that the gap right now is really, is quite large. Some people might require higher land costs and have even, you know, the higher construction costs, so you'd be at the top of this range. You might get somebody with really, really low land, like who values it pretty low, and then your construction costs are really low. You might. But we thought it was, the better way to show this would be to do those averages.
Okay.
That was the exciting part?
I mean, I think it's very exciting.
So to take a step back, we're saying they're getting now an average of 11 and a half. If they were going to go through the process of redeveloping, they would need something closer to 25.
Yes.
Now, would they get 25?
That gets at the point of a developer would be unlikely to acquire this land and actually develop, because they would not get that 25. That's what they would need to get to justify the redevelopment.
Okay. Because they would get what they're, close to what they're getting now, even after redevelopment.
Exactly.
Makes it less, very highly unlikely they would redevelop.
Yeah, because their costs would exceed the value.
Got it.
And I, I think the reality of the situation that is, is likely the city won't have any levers or mechanisms to bridge that large of a gap. I mean, I don't think realistically, there's any way we can, we can put something together that would
Subsidize.
Yeah.
13 and a half dollars a square foot, yeah. You mentioned hands-on. I wondered what that meant.
We have been chatting with city staff about some different approaches you might take. And that's part of the discussion with you all tonight. And some of that could, you know, is the city interested in things like site aggregation and being more hands-on in that way? Infrastructure is going to be a big, a big challenge, especially in West Railroad. What role does the city want to have? How much space, you know, in that, in that area do you want? That's what I mean by hands-on.
So is the regional number, would that be, you know, within, is it like the $25 a square foot, is it 15? You know, what is it in the Portland region?
Are you asking about what the current rents are for the Portland region? It's that $9 to $14.
It's the $9 to $14.
Yeah, that's for the I-5 South corridor. And so we were looking, this was based off of what we did in the economic inventory, which was kind of that Tuallaton, Sherwood, it was this larger boundary. And what we were seeing of average rents per square foot were about $9 to $14 there.
So in a market, considering the market dynamics, what would you consider the upper limit for this opportunity?
I mean
Before the, you know, developers would walk away, is there
I mean, they're going to walk away now, would be what I would tell you. Is, there is not enough here. If you go to the next slide. Yes, this is the very high-site coverage ratio. So this looks at the, if you were able to develop the sites at the 45% versus what the other one was showing, 20%. You start to get into that range, very much at the bottom. If you can keep construction costs low and land costs low, and that's potentially where the city could have some, not necessarily in the construction cost, but in that, that role of helping to keep land costs low, or the cost of developing infrastructure, you start to get into that. And this is the one where we talk about the 60%. Like, it's not double, it's, it's less, that the rents would need to increase.
But this is related to already occupied or rented?
Yes.
As opposed to the vacant, which we see in the other segments?
Correct. The vacant land, our task with this particular analysis was to look at the feasibility of redeveloping
Right.
existing contractor establishments, vacant land. It has, it's different, and you can see it more in the comps approach.
So this assessment, I mean, presents some significant challenges for the city to accomplish what we set out to do. These are huge hurdles that
Yeah.
we can't touch reasonably.
Yes. I also, I admit I'm biased. I've been working in construction for 30 years. The construction industry has challenges. It's an aging workforce, people are leaving it faster than they're entering it, costs are skyrocketing, supply chain problems, and with the infill in the metro area, they're being pushed out of the metro area. And so that's just driving up costs further, if they have to travel long distances to their lay-down yards. So I believe that these spaces actually can provide a good, community good, because that's, having that in the metro area helps keep costs low.
Yeah, overall metro area benefit.
Yes.
Not, not
Not a Wilsonville benefit.
Not a Wilsonville benefit.
Yeah.
Because it will help keep costs a little bit lower in the metro area by having the lay-down yards closer.
Yes.
And I think we've got a big hurdle with that railroad. It's 14-foot. Yeah, not too many trucks can get under a 14-foot railroad. So that's the huge infrastructure cost. So what does that do to the whole Basalt Creek plan? It moves it just to the north side?
Well, I think it delays that vision. That division, that vision can still be realized someday, but with the urban growth boundary the way it is, and the market the way it is, it's not an appropriate time for that vision to be realized.
The west side is not a viable option.
That's my opinion.
Yeah. But when you get the other buildout done, you might be able to attract higher rents, potentially, that would then fund the redevelopment.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions right now.
No more questions right now?
Yeah.
Anyone, other questions?
Did we answer the questions that you asked in your report? Did you do it well enough?
I'm going to go back to them for just a moment. You know, one, I, I would welcome some additional thoughts about the question, the second question between accommodating and managing those contractor's establishments versus encouraging and incentivizing them to relocate so that we can realize the vision in Basalt Creek. Because it's something that we've been wrestling with as we think about the code amendments and what zoning to put out there. And, you know, do we, you know, if we were to try to accommodate them accommodate them, that might look like having them as conditional uses with limitations on expansion, or, you know, versus prohibiting contractor establishments and then making them non-conforming. It's just, we're, Dan and I have been talking through this and wrestling with it, and, and because we, we recognize that they, they have a value, you know, to the, as you were saying, Commissioner Willard, you know, to the larger area, and there are fewer and fewer places for those types of uses to locate. And, you know, they, they are suppliers to our construction industry, or the construction that we have going on. You know, they, you know, they, they, they have a value to them, and so how do we, as we're thinking about applying the zoning, you know, how do we work with them? Or do we want to, you know, lean more toward the, how can we incentivize them to find other locations?
Yeah, and part of that is also thinking of, let's say they stay there long-term, how does that site get improved?
Mm-hmm.
Because oftentimes, in these county land uses, right, they're, they're adapting an existing older home to be offices, or some offices, and they're putting up a pole barn that may or may not actually require building permits, and then later they may want to convert that into a more intense use. And so, you know, how do we really, so, one question we've asked ourselves is like, how can, as this business may do well over time, do they build a nice office building to serve their purposes on that site? And how do we encourage and facilitate that if we do want to recognize that they're kind of more actively manage how those uses mature over time? And how can these uses occur in an area as quality development? Because, I mean, we have examples within our city limits of this type of use that are fairly, I mean, they're not the most beautiful developments, but, you know, they're, they're nicely built, and...
So it's in Washington County, and it, and it, their use does fit the current zoning though?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, FD 20 allows contractor establishments, as well as expansion of...
So how much...
As I understand it, part of the reason that FD 20 does is because the use, the zoning that predated, that also did. And so when they adopted FD 20, they didn't want to make these legal, non-conforming uses.
Got it.
Which then facilitated more of them moving it, right?
Understand.
I would add, if it's useful for the commission, just some comments in terms of as these developments have occurred, because it's in the county, one of the issues is that obviously all county regulations apply. And on some of these, there's been more engagement with the city, on some of them, less. There has, it's been notification between those two, the way it's outlined in our urban planning area agreement is really consistent with public notice, as opposed to like, being a service provider or somebody who's engaged upfront. And so, sometimes the city's not engaged early enough to think about things like potential impact to Day Road, and would we want to look at like potential dedication of right-of-way, questions of that nature, and being able to make sure that that's, you know, proportionate to their impact on the system, and we haven't had kind of the ability to do that. And so I think embedded maybe within this question is, that information, I guess, might be helpful to you as you think about this question is, if, I guess, I don't even know how to ask the question, but providing that information to you and thinking about like this relationship between having contractor establishments in the county versus if there's an opportunity for us to do something that would allow us to at least have more, govern more of our fate around it, whether it's about impact to the system, or about like our screening standards instead of the county's screening standards, or other things that we might want to regulate, even if it's not to say like, we don't want that use, it's more about what would we want to do if we were to continue to, you know, I guess, encourage this use maybe even, or at least adapt to it? Does that accommodate it? That one of the things would be like, you know, are that, like, most of you have probably driven Day Road, you've probably seen what the establishments were talking about, and so thinking about like, if we were to accommodate, what would you, I think another part of my question would be like, what would you want to, I guess, how would you want to facilitate? What would you want to have involved with that? I don't know if I'm asking the question well, but I'm maybe sprinkling other commentary in there for you to consider as you grapple with this question.
So it's currently outside city limits?
Correct.
So, is it feasible to incorporate it into the city, and does that change our influence?
I mean, anyone, any city staff can answer this, but I guess since my microphone's on, the areas within the urban growth boundary, obviously it was brought in by Metro, which is why we concept planned it, and so it's in what's called our urban planning area, and we have an urban planning area agreement with the county. And so, they place the FD 20 designation and zone until the city decides to annex the property. The history in Wilsonville has been all like property owner initiated annexation.
Okay.
And so typically, we often see like in our urban planning areas, when development is going to occur, that then, if, especially if it has to connect to services in any way, then it annexes into the city. And then development occurs consistent with city regulation.
True.
And so, like, I think one of the questions would be, so, you know, because if we want to accommodate contractor establishments, then obviously we would want to make sure that those types of businesses would be in allowed use if they annex to the city, and it's more about how they develop and not the use itself, like that would be one of the questions, versus having an industrial code for this area that didn't even allow them. It's so, but we historically have not anned, done like a holistic area annexation with our urban planning areas, so that, for example, is consistent in Frog Pond West, whereas essentially each property has come in with a development application, and that gets annexed, and the undeveloped parcels remain out in the county until the time of annexation. And so, with the residential, we often see less, like, I think in our residential urban planning areas, there's kind of less, well, I mean, that might be changing too with middle housing, like I think we have questions about the area that remains out in the county, what, how will that work in the interim? But with this industrial area, with these kind of pre-existing allowed uses, there's a lot more opportunity for the industrial area that's unincorporated to develop in an incorporated county prior to coming into the city.
I was going to add too, that one of the things that we have been talking about as well is the possibility of having, we have the urban planning area agreement with Washington County, but, you know, what about either amending the urban planning area agreement or having an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County that would transfer the planning authority for these properties to the city? They would still be not annexed, but, but if an application came in to, for instance, build another contractor's establishment, or an expansion of a contractor's establishment, or some other use that's allowed in FD 20, that they wouldn't get their permits, they wouldn't go to the county for permitting, they would come to the city for permitting, which would give us the opportunity to, you know, apply our standards to the developments. So that is, there is such an agreement between Troutdale, and I think it's Multnomah County, where they have been, they, they arrived at that agreement to be able to do that, and so it's something that we've been talking about, exploring with Washington County as well.
But at this point, we do not know, we haven't had a conversation with Washington County, we do not know how open they are to that option.
Right, yeah.
So to understand, it's confusing to me, I actually was under the impression that the, the West Railroad portion of this was, was going to be annexed a couple, several years back, so I'm, I'm surprised to hear that that's not happening. So then I, it raises another question, is the, would the intent to be, would the intent be to annex the property after it's being developed, or been developed?
I can start, so that, so traditionally, right, it's, I mean, we're so used to, there's a lot of kind of novel things to Wilsonville going on up here, I would say, right? We're very used to kind of rural land comes into the city, then it gets developed to urban uses. So, there is, I mean, it happens elsewhere in the region, particularly in Washington County, where there are existing urban developments even, that, that are, end up being approved by the county, and then, for various reasons, almost necessitated to annex to the adjacent city. And so there could be a situation where something is permitted in the county and expected to stay as at use, and then gets annexed in the city. The only real examples of that we have in Wilsonville have, have been a couple of churches on our edges that have needed to, because they're completely surrounded or needed utilities, were developed under county zoning, but then ended up being annexed into the city.
Okay. But the lay-down yards probably don't need those services, and would be less likely to ask for annexation.
Yeah, a lot of... Correct. A lot of what we see out there is that, you know, you only have a couple employees who are stopping in and out, and so the house that's turned into an office has, you know, septic with...
Septic.
And they're able to maintain that because they're showing that they don't have people on-site, like working all the time, and most of it is transportation impact. And so that's the harder part, because it is our facility, Day Road is our facility, Garden Acres is our facility, we want to be able to have more input on that, which has been a struggle, but a lot of times they're not connecting to water or sewer, and therefore it doesn't trigger annexation.
Got it. So, those two roads are part of Wilsonville's assets?
Correct. So Day Road was annexed to the city with the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility construction.
So the surrounding land isn't in the city, but the roads are?
Correct.
Yeah, what was under discussion quite a while ago was the railroad track crossing and, you know, basically annexing that chunk of property and, you know, basic, and redoing the road and everything, so you could get trucks through there without making the loop through town.
Some of the property, like, for example, on the south side of Day Road, has been annexed. We have a couple, at least, well, one project on the south side of Day Road that's part of Coffee Creek planning area, and so industrial area. So that has been annexed, and there's opportunity for those properties to annex. Until we put the zoning in place for the north side of Day Road, we won't have annexations. And then again, we typically wait for property owners to initiate that process. Or, you know, there have been instances where there have been certain proposals out in this area that have gone to the county and have triggered utility, would trigger utility connection, and so then they have been directed to contact the city of Wilsonville.
To annex, okay.
Correct.
So, so for me, the, the idea of accommodating and managing those contractor establishments makes sense to the extent that we can with the current agreements and, you know, without annexation. You know, I think encouraging the relocation and the redevelopment doesn't, doesn't make sense at this time, as we've talked about. I think I would, I don't feel that this is a huge priority. In the big scheme of our planning problems, I don't know where this falls on the priority spectrum. For me, I don't see it as a big priority. However, if we had a vision for this land, and we wanted to go after data centers, or we wanted to go after a, a very specific clean tech, and we were going to invest in the power, and we were going to invest in the infrastructure to get there, the water, that would be different, but since we're not actively wanting to invest to attract, then I don't think it's a big priority.
I would note for the commission that part of the conversation we want to have about Basalt Creek is with the passage of time, and with this kind of new information and the things that have happened since we adopted the concept plan, that this is in part a conversation to potentially get into some of the things you're talking about, is to potentially refine the vision that's set forth. Obviously, we're not like, going to just like throw everything out the window that was in the Basalt Creek concept plan. It is still a foundation, but some of the kind of, I guess, broad vision and goals and guiding principles that are within that document are fairly broad. So there is an opportunity to have conversation about, you know, this is, at this point, outside of Coffee Creek, this is the only industrial area that's essentially not already in the city that we have to, to grow in, and that is a part of our 20-year land supply. So, thinking about it in that regard of like, what do we want the future of Wilsonville's employment land to look like? And, you know, you obviously consider what's in the city already, but thinking about what do we want for this place? I mean, we can have, you all, Planning Commission, City Council can have those conversations about how do we refine the vision, or is there a specific thing we want to go after for this area?
I see. And I imagine pursuing a specific industry that is, it would, it would exceed some of the rents that you were describing earlier. It would be, it would be the best opportunity to justify those development costs.
We've discussed a few, just a few options, so when you think of West Railroad, if you were able to get some kind of master developer, somebody who came in with a data center, or, I'm sorry, some, some high-intensity user who could even support some of that infrastructure development, lower some of those costs, yes, I, I think that could be a way to, to proceed. One of the things that we've mentioned is, is the idea of a, of like a, a development plan for West Railroad. You know, what, what does it look like if you were to actually able to assemble multiple parcels and have a much bigger area, and how does that impact the development potential there? I, I, we haven't done the, like, an analysis of to tell you exactly how much you could get if you got these users, but I think that's on the right track, that kind of, or could be, if that's the direction the city was interested in.
Okay, with that, it makes even more sense for me to manage the contractor establishments.
So what, in your analysis, what industry makes the most sense if there weren't all the constraints?
For West Railroad, or?
Yes.
I, I don't think it's a specific one, I think it could be many, and I think that's kind of, you know, if you do want to go after an industry, that's something for the city to consider further. You know, one of the things we mentioned was general manufacturing, that kind of thing, like, I think some of the things that stand out to me that may be less, there's, there's things that may be less attractive for the area. But I think you've got potential for general manufacturing, food processing, even depending upon what the infrastructure looks like, your, your warehousing and your logistics, those kind of things could locate, locate out there if you can get the truck access. I don't have all that knowledge at the moment. There's certain other, you know, more advanced manufacturing industries that could, some of those uses could be out there. There is the challenge of you've got mining to the north of the site, which can cause some complications. I was speaking to our mining economist, and he's like, it can have impacts, but not, it's not equal across different businesses, and so these are more discussions you would want to have. And I know that, you know, when we were talking to Business Oregon and GPI, they had a lot of excitement for this site, like, for Basalt Creek overall, and I'm certain that Matt and your, you know, your, your dev manager and, and could be speaking to them and other developers to get a better sense of who might be interested, and if that aligns with some of the potential in the area.
Commissioner Hiverland?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer, I'll, I'll answer the question. I, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Willard in terms of accommodating and managing the contractor establishments. I, I think the financial realities don't really allow us to go any other way. You know, I, I like the idea of pursuing, in IG... You know, I, I like the idea of pursuing an IGA for planning authority. And that seems like a really good idea to try to get the best of both worlds, to have some impact on, on design and making sure it, it meets the city's requirements from an infrastructure perspective. And I do want to say that I think, I think Wilsonville would be well suited to keep our current precedent on annexation and, and leave it on a site by site, a, you, a, an owner by owner basis. Yeah, there's, there's enough challenges that we face as a city. Adding forced annexation is probably not where we want to go.
I'm, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners, so I appreciate it. And I appreciate, I think, yeah, one of the initial questions, so I appreciate the, the regional kind of big picture. Because I think about like, oh, you hear when you're Hillsborough, you hear about semiconductor industry and like, I don't know, just things like that. So I'm like, oh, I appreciate the conversation around, do we want to think about specified or industry and that kind of thing? And I'm also thinking about like, okay, what resources are there at the state or federal level? Where are the, where is their interest in the Pacific Northwest for different kinds of industries? So anyways, I appreciate it.
Can I just mention too, on the clean tech side, the industries that we did look at were industries that Oregon Task Force have identified for Oregon. So these were already, and it was just kind of refining them a little bit more for Basalt Creek. So the state's already identified that these are some potential.
I'm, started out kind of 50/50, kind of thinking about finding a middle of the road solution, but after discussion, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with, with the rest. I think there's a lot of impact, a lot, a lot of changes that are going to happen and a lot of different things that need, different challenges that need to be managed upfront. So I think that's the, the key way to go.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort that went into this. It's obviously a lot to, to put together this kind of detail. I do agree with the accommodating and managing approach. I would like to see if the city can get more in, get more control over what the county is, is allowing them to do. And I'm, I'm also considering, you know, I hate to say it this way, but the hot industry, right? Well, we're looking beyond the next five years, right? So we can't pigeonhole our approach to this whole area based on what's hot right now. We have to make sure that we allow for the next hot industry or the next phase. So I, I want to make sure that we allow for, for that. But the infrastructure is, is a, is a big concern for me. Because I, I think before that area is useful for an industrial area, it's going to lead, need a lot of infrastructure work. I, I know the bridge is a huge constraint, the rail bridge is a, is a huge constraint because anything that's industrial is going to have, you know, 18-foot trailers, right? So they got to make sure we, we have a mechanism and replacing a rail bridge is not inexpensive. So, but yeah, I, other than that, I, I don't think I have other questions or comments. Any other questions or comments from staff?
No, very helpful, thank you.
Okay. All right, that moves us to the next work session item. So the next, on the agenda is a work session for the CFEC parking. This work session is a chance for public planning commissions to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared for the work session. Will city staff please present?
Certainly. And I'll start to say, and you can call it CFAC, that's what the state and us. CFAC.
Yeah, I'll call it CFEC.
Yes, I've listened to many estate webinar where talking about CFAC.
Nothing like acronyms to keep us going, all right?
Yes. So I, you'll hear me call it CFAC as I talk.
That's fine, Mr. Polly.
I almost say CFAC as much as Frog Pond, but he's saying it more. So CFAC Parking Compliance Standards Reform. So again, Dan Polly, the city's planning manager, really my purpose tonight is to let you know what I know about this, kind of bring you up to speed as you have the opportunity to deal with this topic. So to acknowledge that parking is certainly a topic that can trigger some emotions and, so we, we want to, let me explain the background, kind of what the sandbox this, the state's given us to play in, sort of say, and make that clear. So with that, let me, let me get into this. A bit more kind of broader, you saw this in the staff report, but broader what this is all about. What is CFAC? Because it's, it's broader than parking. So this goes back to, so years ago, in 2007, there was a goal set by the legislature to reduce climate pollution by 75% by 2050. Governor Brown found that really the legislature wasn't moving stuff, administrative bodies in the state weren't really moving stuff towards that goal. And so this executive order 20-04 directed state agencies to do everything within their authority to reduce climate pollution. And among those was the response by both ODOT as well as the, as, as, as well as Department of Land Conservation and Development. They adopted a number of new rules that govern transportation and land use planning. And you will, you, you act like you don't know what CFAC is. Most of you that'll be on this commission for a while, you'll definitely know what CFAC is by the time you're done. It's letting you know because we have transportation system planning and other things coming up that will be very much centered on CFAC as well. Among the CFAC requirements is parking reform. And essentially state, the, a state direction of how local jurisdictions, to the extent that they can have parking minimums, as well as some specificity about what type of parking regulations they have. Certainly, as you can imagine, a number of jurisdictions and elected officials around the state were not thrilled with this idea. And it has been challenged by a number of local governments. It's part of the reason, I think strategically, that we've kind of waited as a city is to understand how this kind of went through the court system. It has at this point in March of this year, the Court of Appeals largely rejected challenges by, by local governments. And then the Supreme, Oregon Supreme Court denied a petition to review, so leaving that appeals court decision in place. So, so now we're looking at what we really do. I've been before you a time or two talking about state compliance. And as we look at state compliance, I mean, that is obviously a project goal here, is comply with the state. But as we do that, we also always like to look for opportunities to better encourage quality and functional development. How can we leverage this opportunity to have to look at this from a compliance standpoint to do it better, to, to better understanding how we manage parking, do it in a different way? I think if you think through this, an analogy with like what we've done with middle housing, it was completely different, but it's also led us to think about housing quite a bit differently and pursue different tools to better manage and better, kind of get better housing variety, things like that. And I'm, my hope is that as we do that with parking, we'll look at parking management strategies and just kind of start looking at parking from different angles than we traditionally have, hopefully find some, some novel solutions that serve the community well. So back to our state rules, a big key that is being directed is to remove or substantially reform, reform minimum parking requirements. Really why that ended up being a focus for climate-friendly and equitable communities is because there's a lot of inefficient land use around parking. It reduces walkability in both, you know, having people that have to walk more susceptible to pollution as well as vehicle pedestrian interaction, as well as having that cost burden of having the only feasible transportation option being a, you know, 50-plus-thousand vehicle that costs a couple of hundred a month to insure, right? On top of all the other housing and other cost burdens and utility cost burdens, as well as just obviously pollution. So that's why, as it's adopted by, the purpose why the state is pursuing this. So in this project, there's actually two phases of compliance. We're already in what they call parking A, which is already in effect, supersedes existing city code or other policy. And then there's parking B, which is really the focus of what we're doing here, is to comply with that. And our deadline to comply with parking B is the middle of next year. So that's why we're doing this project now. Parking A, there's a, a number of components of this where like it reduces the amount of parking for like residential development. It also eliminates parking minimums for a number of kind of targeted, very specific uses. But kind of the big portion of this as it applies to Wilsonville is what's called the transit proximity rule, which, which says, essentially says within half a mile of the most frequent transit route in the community, which for us is Bus 4 and 2X, as well as within three-quarters mile of the west station, the city's not allowed to enforce parking minimums. So that, that covers most of the city right there. So, I mean, the exceptions being Charbonneau, the western two-thirds of Villebois and some of the area up in Basalt Creek, that, and Coffee Creek that we've been talking about. There's also electric vehicle ready requirements that are already in place, saying like for certain new development, as you saw in your packet, that you need to provide essentially the conduit to install charging infrastructure. So parking.
Wait, say that again? You, you have to install the conduit for it to be ready? You don't have?
Yeah, you don't have to like put in the charging stations, you just have to put in the conduit so you can run the electrical wire to charge.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Okay.
So, so what we're looking at here is, and I won't go into a lot of detail of these options. We will, because our, our purpose tonight is not to select an option, but just kind of introduce what we're looking at and then your next work session will really get more into the option and get some guidance of what option we may choose. Certainly, this, this notion that parking A already removes minimums for most of the city does have, there's a, there's a strong nexus there to what option we may choose, right? Because whatever compliance option, you're really talking again about Charbonneau that's built out, the western two-thirds of, of Villebois and industrial areas that underwriting and such tends to provide sufficient parking historically in any way. So we'll note that, you know, let's be honest, a lot of the parking conversation in the city revolves around town center. And no matter what option you choose under parking A, or even if parking A didn't apply, no matter which of the options you choose, town center is going to be exempt from parking minimums. So it's really around town center. A future conversation about parking management is really what we're looking at. So, which is called for, I mean, the, the plan, the town center plan talks about doing a future parking management plan. We don't have enough budget in this project to really get into all those parking management plans, but where we can, we may touch on it. But most of that will be for a separate project in the future. There also are, in addition to choosing an option which, you know, remove, the first option is remove parking minimums throughout the city for those areas that are left. The second one, it's, it's hard to describe, you can see it in your packet, but I would say it concisely is it really gives you a menu of choose a few reform policies that you can, you can implement. And then option three has kind of a longer detailed prescriptive reform list. Then there's some other things, parking area design reforms. So when parking, because through this, the concept is not, the city's not discouraging parking, right? Say, it's not requiring a minimum, but still the code will be where, you know, where there's, where there's reasons to put parking and develop or designs parking, that's still going to be facilitated and supported. In that, there are some specific requirements for parking design, some changes, some things the state directs around landscaping and shading of parking areas as well, and some other things that will, that will be part of this project to go through when adopt, making sure that all of our like requirements for trees and things like that, for parking, for pedestrian circulation in parking lots, all comply with, with those state requirements. And I, I do want to again stress this beyond compliance, or want to look at parking management strategies for current and potential parking congestion. Some of the town center stuff in particular is a little difficult because the congestion doesn't, we don't understand the exactly how it's working without knowing the future, but I mean, we can start to strategize how we may address it in the future. But parking management, there are existing kind of areas to address, we look at, address this as budget allows. So if we know really quick what compliance option we're choosing and it's a pretty straightforward option, then that can open up more budget to explore some parking management strategies. Then some will be put in a parking lot for future separate projects. So I will tell you, I had a lot more references in my original draft of the staff report that I saved you from and I edited out. So that is what I have. And so really the question is for this, what questions you have about the purpose, kind of the background and the scope of the project as we get to work on this together over the coming months.
How do you think, if, if you were to go back in time and apply these new guidelines, rules, regulations to existing developments that we have, how would things then develop differently, in your opinion?
Well, I mean, broader scale, I think a lot of you have been around this enough that you understand that typically the finance industry and underwriters are more conservative than municipal codes. So really, functionally is going to be, right, that the underwriters or the financiers that are going to say, we know that this will be a successful, our, our books say this will be a successful project with this many parking spaces and that's, and we're not going to give it, give you a loan unless you have that many parking spaces. That tends, as I understand it, I'm not expert, expert in loans and underwriting, but that would drive it. So for the most part, and also even the marketing people and just developers in general. So for the most part, and also even the marketing people and just developers in general, see benefit to having parking. So most projects would have similar amounts. I mean, there's outliers there, right? There's other motivations, especially when you start talking about some residential projects that, right, that it becomes pretty apparent that housing people is a higher priority than housing cars sometimes. So that ratio may come up in that type of projects particularly. But I mean, that's, there's trade-offs, right? There is a cost to having those parking minimums. But for most projects, probably not a huge delta.
So if I'm to look at, take a step back and look at the purpose of why we're doing this analysis, is we have until June 30th of next year to make a decision, make changes in our development code that fit Option B, or be Option 1, 2, or 3?
Correct. And then really acknowledge Option A as we do that work as well, right? Take out those minimums that are in conflict with existing state rules.
So we'll have to make changes in our code to make sure we're in compliance with either Option 1, 2, or 3 for Parking B?
Correct.
But Option 1 is the same as Option, or Parking A, isn't it?
Yeah, just adding those few areas to it. So I don't want to prejudge the option too much today.
Understood.
But there's certainly recognizing that you're only really making a decision for a small amount of the city. And so really, in the bigger part of this project then comes about the, like parking lot design components and opening up some conversations about what then? Now that we don't have this parking minimum that we've kind of relied on, or like thought we relied on all these years as our main parking management tool, what are the other parking management strategies?
That doesn't have to be done by June of next year.
And the consultant that we have onboard, Brian Davis with Studio Davis, he's done a lot of his parking work throughout this state, and so you'll meet him next work session, and I'm sure you'll have a good conversation with him.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, well, I think the reasons and the scope's clear. I was curious about, since it's mandated by the state, you mentioned budget for like parking management plan or things like that, so are we getting funding from the state to implement the changes?
Yeah, so this current project, that is partly why we're doing it now, but partly why the scope is fairly small, is because the grant amount that they were able to award us is fairly minimal. And if we had, you know, originally we had hoped to scope it to do more, like look more at parking management, and we hope that we can still pursue more grant funding, or council may elect to put budget towards that in the future.
I have some questions about the scope of the project. So this does apply to commercial properties as well, not just residential?
It applies to all types.
Okay. So would it apply to any potential redevelopment of Fry's or the movie theater?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, no matter how you, that's a Town Center, so no matter what we choose, or which option we choose, or whatever, then, yeah, there won't be parking minimums for the redevelopment of that site. Or if a user came in and did adaptive reuse of that site, they wouldn't have to retain a certain amount of that existing parking.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, because I have to, because I think I ask this every time we have a state-required thing, what happens if we don't comply?
We can find out. They haven't detailed what would happen. But I mean, the basis of it is that it just caused confusion because this would apply anyway, and we'd have coded conflicts with the law that actually applies.
Right. Because Parking A has already been done, so the majority of the city's already encompassed by that. This is more an effort to code clean up to align with existing legislation and close a couple gaps.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. How do we make a quick decision so that we can focus on parking management?
We'll work on that next work session.
So maybe leaning towards Option 1 and just going again?
Rubber stamp it, go.
More to talk about later.
Because certainly, Option 1 is a lot less code writing.
Yes.
And that's really.
And code review.
Option 2 and 3 are a lot more complex, would be a substantial amount of code writing and like reviewing, and potentially having additional staff to manage and things like that.
With questionable payback on benefit.
With unlimited applicability, yeah.
I do have one process question, so, and I should have checked the schedule. So is council having a work session on this item, or how's that?
No, they will. I'm not going to throw Parking Adam at their very first meeting for the new council. So we're looking at their first work session in February.
Okay, so, but by then, we'll have kind of our recommendation ready?
Correct.
And that will be for their work session?
So, yeah, the idea is you get this introduction tonight, and then you'll make your recommendation on which option to pursue. The first time council's going to have it is really, we'll have a recommendation from you of what option to pursue. Good question.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing no further discussion, thank you. That concludes this work session. Now we are on to informational. Next on the agenda is an informational item for Frog Pond East and South Infrastructure Funding Plan. This is a chance for the Planning Commission to learn more about a specific topic. No public comment will be taken on this agenda item. If the public has questions or comments on the topic, you are encouraged to reach out directly to city staff. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared for this. Will city staff please present?
Sure. And of course, I have to acknowledge you thought I was done talking Frog Pond East and South. But you get a bonus episode tonight.
Sorry, I cut you off.
So, just a bit of context here. So an infrastructure funding plan of how to pay for the infrastructure, kind of that financial part of it is not something that is really historically in the purview of the Planning Commission. It really goes directly to city council under their budget authority. Yet it certainly interacts with all the work that we've been doing. And so just wanted to inform you of what we're looking at, of as we kind of look forward now, that the councils adopted this infrastructure funding plan. Also, as I'm sure you're aware, they had the second reading for adoption of the development code back on the 2nd. So when we come back to work on January 2nd, that kind of, that policy framework will all be in place and ready for annexation, but the other part of it is making sure we have the infrastructure to support that development. So that's, I just wanted to inform you of what the councils, based on staff's recommendations, is really, is pursuing in terms of encouraging, of getting the infrastructure going. You may or may not be aware, kind of the key infrastructure here that's kind of critical path is to upsize the trunk sewer line in Beckman Creek from Beckman Road down into Memorial Park. That's a major project that's being designed, and construction will be starting soon and anticipated to be done. Right now, the anticipation is that project to really be wrapping up construction in 2027. So there'll be that trunk line, as well as a path down that creek corridor is the plan. So, because otherwise, there's not sewer capacity for East and South. So a little bit more background, really when we talk infrastructure categories, this is all consistent with the infrastructure funding plans overall for Frog Pond, for the Frog Pond area, as well as what was in the West Infrastructure Funding Plan. We talk about off-site infrastructure, which is kind of city-funded stuff that's off-site. On-site infrastructure are those things that are really the, typically the responsibility of developer, your local streets, your, just the immediate infrastructure to serve the project, as well as stormwater management. Then there's framework infrastructure, which are the larger roads, those projects to serve a broader area within East and South. And that framework infrastructure is really the focus of the plan, and looking at how to fund, how that funding works for those. And so for East and South, those key framework projects are, as you might expect, the urbanization of Stafford and Advance Road, as well as 60th Avenue south of Advance Road, the Frog Pond South sanitary pump station. We've talked about before that all Frog Pond South, all topographically speaking, reduces to the south, so anything that's gravity-fed needs to be pumped back up to Advance Road to serve. And the fact that that area is smaller property, so no one property may be able to immediately take down that pump station to serve the area, really makes it a broader framework project, rather than an individual developer project. Also, similarly, the stormwater, the main stormwater facilities for Frog Pond South, as well as some trails. So let's talk about the assumptions that went into this. It's amazing, a lot of work went into this, I'm just going to say it really quick, though. So the basic idea, past practice, what's been done elsewhere, as well as elsewhere in Frog Pond, is really the main idea, how this is done, is developers have kind of the equivalent of their local street, their local infrastructure, that they're responsible for along these framework infrastructure areas. And then the infrastructure's oversized, whether that's putting a larger pipe or a wider road, and the city has then the responsibility for that oversized portion that doesn't serve, that's beyond what would be required for local service. And that oversized portion is then typically, we'll talk about this, is done by, the developer essentially builds it, and the city gives them SDC credits in order to pay for that, that they're able to.
And how do we determine oversize, the cost of oversize versus the cost of?
It's all like done, like we know the cost of how much it is to, that's, it's, we know like it costs this much to put in an eight-inch pipe versus a 10-inch pipe, right? It's a pretty straightforward thing that's done all the time in infrastructure planning. A key component is we did make some assumptions about phasing based on the best information available. We were conservative with that in terms of if we put it happening as early as we thought it could potentially happen, really saying, because if it happens earlier, if it happens later, that really doesn't affect it, so we want to understand, I'm not saying this clearly, but anyway, we had to think through phasing, I'll just say that. And we were conservative in our assumptions there to make, to make sure that the financing would work even if the phasing wasn't precise to what we are forecasting. So what the proposed funding plan is, is that baseline funding strategy, it really starts with that. Developer builds it, developer receives SDC credits for the oversized portion. But then, there are those, a number of circumstances that we anticipate on a case-by-case basis that will be approved on case-by-case by city council, where we have to use besides that base, baseline assumption and method. I mean, we've run the analysis, we know there's enough SDC credits to fund everything in that traditional manner, but there's other reasons why it may work. It may be that a developer's coming in, it just doesn't make sense, like Stafford Road may be so expensive that it just doesn't make sense for one developer to take that down all at once. Or, as we talked about Frog Pond South, it's just, there's just so many different properties that really someone needs to take on that one pump station that needs to be there before anything can really be built down there. So the funding plan has a menu of options that the city has researched and feels would be acceptable on a case-by-case basis for the city council to kind of plug in to fund one of these framework projects as needed. And that can come up as either as part of a development agreement, when a developer brings in, comes in for land use, or it could be, the city could develop a specific funding plan for a specific piece of infrastructure independently. And that is all I had. I hope that provides some information that's helpful for you and what we're looking at here. Happy to answer any clarifying questions. Take any comments.
I just have a concern that it's not an appropriate use of an urban renewal district. I don't know that it's the definition of.
It certainly has not been prioritized in our urban renewal plan for our urban renewal district, and really, so we, well, that's never off the table because future council could change their minds, but really, that has not been the focus as a funding strategy out here.
Thank you for the informational presentation.
And I believe that will be my last Frog Pond East and South presentation.
Oh, where's the champagne?
Unless you want reruns.
Right?
Over the year.
Oh, we have cookies, yeah. The next item is city council action minutes. Any questions or comments on any of that? Nope. And the 2025 PC Work Program, nothing? I mean, that's basically in the back, right?
Yeah, and you'll see, you know, that, nothing real surprising, you'll see the Wilsonville industrial land readiness moving into the Phase 2 citywide portion of that as well. You'll see finishing up the housing, the C-Fac parking, and then later in the year, we have Conference of Plan Update Project will be going on, so.
All right, thank you.
Should be a fun year, and happy to have you all back.
We're happy to be back. We've completed all scheduled agenda items. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 8:32 PM. Thank you.